All right, welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Board of -- regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners for the purpose of transaction in the general business of township. Today's date is October 14th, 2015. Please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection honoring the service men and women who have placed themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our safety. Please join the Board in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
At this time, I would entertain the motion dispensing the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minute book of the township. There was a motion of floors or a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, please record your unanimous vote. I have a special reports, I have a special report on the passing of James R. Full Genetti. On September 21st, 2015, the Springfield Township family lost one of its finest leaders, James R. Full Genetti, former Township Secretary and Manager. Jim worked for Springfield Township from 1949 until 1989. After serving his country in the Army as a communications specialist, he was hired as the Township Clerk and served in that position for one year. He was promoted to Township Secretary for the remaining 39 years. In 1970, when the Council Manager of Form of Government became accepted in Pennsylvania, Jim was appointed as the Springfield Township Manager. Jim and his wife Rose raised four children in Flower Town, James Jr., Jean, Joanne, and Mary. He was a friend and mentor to many of the senior members of the Springfield Township staff, as well as many of the other managers in the Delaware Valley. Jim attended St. Genevieve's Church every day before coming to work. After retirement, Jim and Rose relocated to suburban Tampa, Florida, where he was able to golf and be outdoors year-round. Jim was 87 years old when he passed away. With respect to the billboards, the, as a result of the meeting held on September 29th, 2015, MC Outdoor LLC, the owners of the billboard sign on Southbound Route 309 Expressway, MC Outdoor has agreed to turn off both faces of the billboard sign at 7:30 PM until the landscape buffer requirement of the billboard are met. The Board of Commissioners is continuing to work with MC Outdoor to help achieve that goal. If I could ask our solicitor for one clarification with respect to the daylight savings time that we?
We have not asked him to honor that. He said, he specifically said 7:30 at the meeting, and that issue was raised and he, the issue of daylight savings time was, was raised, and he didn't really respond to it. So we have to follow up on that.
Okay. That was a question that was asked the other night, so if we could?
Sure, makes sense.
All right. With those special announcements, the Board of Commissioners is now open to comments or questions from the public. The Board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the Board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, excuse me, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action of those items listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item, now would be the appropriate time. If you could please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Brennan Prime. I live at 265 Northwestern Avenue. I'm here tonight to talk to the Board of Commissioners about your intention to vote on a public hearing for a new consideration of rezoning of the front portion of the TC tract at 9303 Ridge Pike. I want to start by just stating a couple of facts that I think everybody can agree on. The first is that in the summer of 2014, there was a prior public hearing where the applicant submitted a plan for rezoning of the front seven acres to support Atria and 34 units to be deployed on the back of the property. That motion was denied by the Board of Commissioners. My understanding is that a new dialogue began with the applicant in July of 2015, and I corresponded with Don Berger, Township Manager, about that. And Don reported to me that indeed, before the workshop meeting of July 6th of 2015, that what I'll call a subcommittee of Commissioners had met with Mr. Nolan and with Atria, that subcommittee being Commissioner Daley, Commissioner Shum, and Commissioner Standish. One of the things that Don communicated, and I'll quote from your email, Don, is that the Commissioners in the early meeting made it clear they were not going to reconsider the same plan they denied. So that's a fact. On Monday night, two nights ago, Mr. Nolan came back to the Board, presented a plan, and requested a new public hearing. That plan consisted of the same Atria development, the same request for rezoning to begin at the front part of the property, and a plan for the back with 32 homes. The facts there are that it differs from the prior plan by just two homes and by a mere quarter acre of additional open space. So what I would like to say is that when you had that earlier meeting and made it clear that you were not going to make that reconsideration, that set a standard. I think that any reasonable person could conclude that effectively, the plan that was presented on Monday night is the same plan because the differences are so minimal. So, the Board of Commissioners has a choice. You can either vote to approve the public hearing and go against what you had stated in that July 6th meeting, or you can vote to deny the public hearing and uphold what you put forward in that July 6th meeting. So this is really, to my mind, a larger issue than just rezoning or a redevelopment matter. This is about the integrity of the Springfield Township Board of Commissioners. Springfield's watching, and I hope you make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Brennan, I could just say to you, in July, when you were here, and I think August, I did convey to you that we had met with Mr. Nolan, correct? And I did convey to you that we are looking at options, maybe possibly making Atria a little bit bigger in density and reducing the density in the back.
Mm-hmm.
I'm, just so everybody's clear?
Oh, yeah.
I did acknowledge that, too.
Absolutely. I understand and I was aware of it the whole time. In fact, this, this email was from the 7th of July. I'm just stating that, you know, but based on what was said here, what's on the table tonight is the same Atria plan and a plan that, when compared to the one from the prior public hearing, is so minimal in difference that it does not meet the criteria that you yourself set forward.
But you would agree that there's reduced density in the back?
In a technical sense of the word, but not in a practical sense of the word.
It's two houses worth $1.6 million, so.
Atria adds $35 million to what he's got now.
Well, I don't know what the numbers are, that's between them two or whoever. We looked at trying to come up with a plan to reduce the density in the back, to try and give you as much, on your side, as much open space as we can. Have you seen the two single homes there? They're not doubles anymore, they're singles.
I understand.
So try to incorporate much of, but again, it's, you may disagree, but just to the folks at home and understand that the density has been reduced, will vote whether or not to advertise or not, then we'll go from there.
Right. Well, in response, I would submit that the applicant failed your instructions to the extent that it's an insult to the Board of Commissioners.
I understand your comments. Thank you so much.
Jeannie McClintock, Brookside Road. I wasn't here Monday night, but I understand it was a group here from, about Hillcrest Pond. Friends of Hillcrest Pond wanted to dredge the pond, and I just wanted to know what's going to be done about that.
We already dredged it, it's done. We, we took it under consideration.
Well, that one didn't happen.
They're looking to dredge the entire pond. We determined it's going to be something that we're going to have to discuss in the budget to see if, it's a big number to do it.
Yeah. How much do you think?
I think they gave us a number of $100,000.
Yeah, like, seven years ago, it cost $100,000 to take out half of what needs to come out today.
Yeah. So, isn't, is, would that be money that's in stormwater management funds?
Well.
All of it.
No, I'm kidding. Probably.
No, because I'm just saying, I did see that there was $300,000 for sidewalks, and I know that's a safety issue, but so is the flooding on Brookside, you know, where there's sewer backup and stuff.
Well, yes, and whether the dredging's directly related to that or not, we're going to take a look at it. They actually pledged, I believe what they pledged was they have $50,000 themselves. So that was good for me to know, because I didn't realize they had that many funds. We're going to ask them to deplete all that or not, that's a whole other. But we decided that that would be such, it's a big, bigger item, that'd be a budget item. We get the budget presented on October 21st, and that's going to, one of the things that we're going to have to consider. And they made a great, you know, argument the other night, and we, we're going to take a look at it.
Yeah, and then that would help us, too, to have that dredge.
Well, that's, we're going to look at with our engineer and whatnot as well, too.
Okay. And that, and any updates on Carlisle or any, I mean, I know that's out, that basin, but are you looking at any other options for a basin over there?
Other than the 14 points that we, I didn't bring my list with me tonight, I'm sorry. Do you have it?
You mean this, this one? That one?
There's a long way, yeah.
The stormwater efforts and, like you said, out?
Yes.
Yeah.
That we've been, no, no other basins other than what's on that, if, I put the wrong book.
No, it says Carlisle, except.
Well, we've talked about that before.
Yeah, and that their neighbor that's against that, so it would have to be somewhere else.
Well, also, we looked at the benefit of that, whether or not that would be worth doing or not, and I think the Board's position was.
Yeah, the, the benefit to the cost, it's going to be an $800,000 job, and it's going to reduce the water level some single-digit amount, and the engineer told the Board that that wouldn't mean very much at all to your neighborhood.
It's just that with the massive amount of water, like they were saying about the grant that was rejected for Hillcrest Pond, that all that water that comes down there is somewhere along the line, a couple of projects will have to slow that down. That'd be two of them. And I guess the other one was the block grant for the, for?
Yeah, we don't have any updates on that.
On Brookside Road.
Other than the county blessed it, and we're just waiting.
Yeah, back in July.
Has anybody participated in the federal, the?
Yeah, we, well, from, just one family.
How many?
14.
Work with that 14?
The 14, the 14 homes are eligible for the grant, where the federal pays 75%. We voted to allocate 25%, only two of those homes originally expressed interest, but they both backed out, correct?
Right.
But there's still one more that's going to go forward.
No, I was talking about the, the block grant that?
They're talking about?
For the drains?
For the bait, for the, right?
Yeah. We haven't heard nothing back yet. No, the counties, Michael O'Benner has blessed it, we're waiting.
Yeah, we're waiting.
We have not, we have no updates on that for you.
Yeah.
Do you have a ti, I mean?
I mean?
We, we don't have a timetable, I mean?
They don't have, how often do they meet? I mean, do they take a year, does it take months? Because we don't know.
We don't know, but we, we will update you next month if we have an update for you.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. I'm Cheryl Jacobs, 9233 Eagleview Drive, Lafayette Hill. And I don't really need to repeat everything that Brennan said. I believe that he spoke for many of us, I can tell you for sure, I totally agree with the sentiments.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Linda Malvanato, and I'm here for my two children, Adam and Mia Bronberg, who are the joint owners of the property abutting the TC tract at 273 Northwestern Avenue, 19128. My daughter lives in California, and my son is in a anesthesiology residency in New York City. They couldn't come down. They're both in unison, wanted to say that they're against the request for a new hearing to reconsider the zoning for the TC tract. They think it's the same old, same old, and with not much of an appreciable difference. So we would really appreciate you considering all that.
Thank you so much.
Dana Burnbaum, 15 West Mill Road in Flower Town. I have a couple of questions about the TC property. Can, can you tell me what his, or whether the new plan is in the back portion? How many homes that he is by right allowed? And how many homes in the new plan there are?
We're, we're going to talk about if Atria was built, how many could you do?
I'm just talking about?
The entire property? With the current zoning?
With the current zoning, just take out the Atria part.
That's what we're trying to figure out, because there's two.
The back portion of the property.
52 plus the manor house, if Atria was not there.
If it, yeah, that's for the whole, whole property.
And then we saw a plan some time ago with Atria Incorporated, and I believe there were 40 new homes plus the manor home.
Yeah, but what I'm asking is, let's pretend he didn't own Atria. I mean, he didn't own the property that Atria is going to sit on, right? The rest of the property, what is his by right ability to build on the rest of that property?
I believe 40, 42.
40.
42.
All right, 42.
I got the ma, I got the drawing.
All right.
Now, is that his by right, what you allowed him to build, which was above his by right, or that's his actual by right?
That's what current zoning allows.
That's what current zoning allows, 42. And so how many are on it now?
32. I think they're proposing 32, correct?
They reduced it to 32.
Just in the back part of the property?
Just in the back.
10, 10 unit reduction.
A 10 unit reduction.
No, be, of the?
No, from what's approved.
Okay.
For it to develop.
I understood.
I'm not talking about what's appro.
Tell me on the same.
You can't talk about something that's not approved, you gotta talk about what's approved.
What's approved? If you took the Atria piece out, it'd be 42 remaining.
That's not the question I'm asking, though.
If, if you didn't build on the seven acres for Atria, what is he allowed on the rest of the property, but right now? That's what you're asking, right?
No, what I'm asking, you approved something that was beyond his by right ability. So what I'm asking is, take out the Atria and take out the deal that you made before, what is he really allowed on that back end?
Well, he's allowed 42 as of, right now.
Right now, the approved plan on the current zoning is 52. Are you talking about going back 10 years?
I'm talking about by right zoning without anything that you've given him in the past.
Well, the, the problem is, is the zoning now exists.
I don't think it's that difficult to do.
The, the, there was nothing extra, there was no bonus. It was 52 approved.
12. And as Bob said, he's got the plan, I thought it was 40. If you annex out Atria, he could build 42.
But that's what we allowed him to build going through all kinds of meetings and zoning changes, et cetera, right?
That was, that was the AAA age qualified zoning.
Age qualified, right, which he's, which he has now retracted in addition.
No, no, it's still age. Still age qualified.
It's still age qualified.
Yes.
But you increased the amount of density because of the age qualification.
You're talking 10, 12 years ago?
That's what I'm trying to figure out. You're talking when it was originally changed nine, 10 years ago.
I'm talking about?
The 52 homes, Don, maybe you can answer.
All right.
How long has the 52 home plan been approved? Nine years?
Nine years, 10 years.
But under the underlying zoning before that, what was his, that's his?
That's what I'm asking.
That was, that was double A, wasn't it?
That was double A, so they're?
Single family.
Single family, a little bit more than a half an acre per lot.
And 40 lots, 40 acres? Little more?
And then, and then you had the option, you could reduce it to the smaller lots with the clustering.
Yeah.
Well, before that.
To create, to create, open pockets of space.
Pockets of space, which? And under that, you could get, oh, where's that other drawing? It's in here, right? Don't we have one here?
The current, uh, the town.
That was? 41 acres, it's 36 acres in Springfield, so if you go a half acre a lot, that would be 72. You take away steep slopes, you take away the roads, you're talking in the 50s?
That's under double A.
That's under double A.
That's for the whole property, is it?
Yes.
Correct.
And then how much, well, billable, I'm clearly not going to get a cl, an absolute answer here.
You'll take 7 acres off of the 40s.
Because it's too, it may be too far back for you to really, really have a specific answer.
No, that's, that's what it is, because we actually kind of looked at that going through this year and a half ago, possibly going back to single-family homes, back there whatnot. I was told by one of the neighbors that they didn't want those small, single-family homes back there. I thought single-family was good at the time, but that's not what the neighbors wanted. They wanted these big estate homes, whatever the number was, five, six, or whatnot. So we looked at the double A, we looked at the AAA. The ultimate plan that was presented was not approved. Now here we are again.
Yeah, and just to answer your question, there's 29 acres remaining.
29 acres remaining in the back, but there's steep slopes, et cetera, et cetera, right?
Two homes per acre would be 58.
Well, that doesn't take, take away any of the steep slopes and other issues that are there.
But there's less on that side of the property than there is on the other, and so you would take off eight.
There's less on, on the back?
You would take eight to, eight to 10 homes off, so it'd be, you know, anywhere from 50, 48 or 50 on the back. And he wanted, and he, the approved plan is 42, he didn't get a bonus because he went with larger homes, and now he's down to 32. So, I don't know, that's not a de minimis reduction.
I have to say, I was sent both of the plans, the plan that was not approved the last time and the plan that you're, you're thinking about going back into a public hearing this time. And I looked at it fairly carefully, and I could not find the couple of homes that were missing on the property. It didn't seem to me to be a substantial change. My feeling is that we are allowing this developer to change the zoning in the front. Not only that, he's changing the zoning, but he's also going to change the zoning, as I understand it, for all of Springfield Township, because in order to fit this Atria building in there, we have to change the zoning for that kind of zoning. Is that correct?
There's institutional on both sides, you're just carrying the institutional threads. I don't believe that's.
Well, no, she's, she's somewhat correct. If it meets all the other criteria, the dimensional changes in the institutional that they're requesting would go to other institutional properties.
On the state highway?
Right.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of qualifications, so it's not, not to say that it's going to go to every institutional property, because there's a lot of clauses in there that kind of pigeonhole for this, you know, for this use.
It was recommended by the county to continue with, the current county.
I'm not understanding what you're saying.
The County Planning Commission earlier approved the plan that we rejected last year. In fact, they wanted us to increase the amount of institutional zoning on the front edge of the property, more than it was being requested. In other words, our, the Planning Commission agreed with the developer.
But our Planning Commission, our Springfield?
Our Commissioner wanted nothing in the back.
Our Springfield Planning Commission.
Our Springfield Township Planning Commission offered nothing in the back if Atria was built in the front. That's, was their planning there.
And one thing you should be understanding is, they're going to expand the width of each block, right?
So.
That's been, been certified.
There was a lot of different opinions, and there was a lot of different variations on the different Planning Committees.
But it was unanimous in our Springfield Township Planning Commission, who really understands Springfield and this property the best, right?
That could be your argument, and I understand your comment.
I believe that giving Atria to this developer is a huge boon for this developer. It is a, a, a big gift to this developer. And the amount that he is giving in the back as compromise is not enough, and this plan is certainly not substantially different from the last plan. When I talk about, I, I mean, the fact that you are even considering another public hearing, that these people who have organized and gotten their neighbors out and been talking about this for nine years have to do it again for such a minor change, is just unbelievable to me. When I talk about our Commissioners giving special compensation to developers and not listening to our constituents, this is what I'm talking about. And it really, really upsets me. I have sat here for nine years through this process, and I believe that these neighbors have not been heard by you. I believe that these neighbors have asked a number of times to sit down with the developers to try to work something out where they can actually talk to the developers, maybe in some of these special meetings that only the Commissioners are going to at this point. I think that you should force the developers with all of, that you can, I mean, I know you can't, you know, but, but say to them, listen, this isn't working this way, you need to talk to the neighbors. These are going to be your neighbors for a very long time, and we believe that you can come to an understanding. These neighbors, I have watched fight for nine years to have some kind of compromise with these builders, and I haven't seen from my Commissioners an willingness to really listen to the neighbors and for the neighbors to really be at that table when you're discussing these things. And now that we're giving Atria, and I am not against Atria, I'm for Atria, the neighbors are not against Atria, they are for Atria, it's time to listen to the neighbors and to come to a compromise with these builders. I just don't understand why you can't sit down with the builders and the neighbors, just a couple of the neighbors, and really have a frank, open discussion about what could really work where everybody would be happy. I don't think you're that far away, I really, really don't. But I think to grant this public hearing now and put the onus back on the neighbors is just completely wrong. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Sir?
John Schwartz, 277 Northwestern Avenue. I was hoping the Board could lend some clarity to the number of homes regarding this issue. Friends of the Springfield Panhandle paid for a by right AAA plan showing 39 single homes on the whole property. Subtracting the front seven acres and steep slopes and wetlands would show that approximately 30 homes would be permitted on the remaining property. This does not take into account the concessions that should be given by the developer in exchange for increased intensity of the Atria project, which is what now, 136 units? Is that correct?
125.
125. So that, that's our, the Friends' issue. We're increasing the front by 125 units. No one's talking about that. We're talking about the number of homes in the back, and we, we paid for a plan showing that he could put 39 single-family homes on there, and no one wants to talk about that. So, and my property abuts the Atria property. This whole thing affects me immensely. Your changing the zoning is moving that guy right next to my property, and no one cares about that, including our Ward Commissioner. So, that's my comment.
Thanks so much. Any other public comments?
Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, Mary.
Hi, Mary Hassler, Orlemont Avenue, Orland. I was just wondering if I can get an update on the status of what's going on at Tankar?
We're, um.
There was paperwork to be filed.
Yeah, we're, we're very close. They, it's been recommended by some of our environmental consultants that the township acquire what's called environmental insurance, because there are things that could happen in the future. It turns out that these environmental insurance policies are negotiated. That is, what the coverage will be is negotiated, and that negotiating is taking place, it's getting closer, we hope to have it finished very, very soon, and then we'll know what the policy is, we'll know what it covers, we'll know what the premium is, we'll be able to buy it, and then we can proceed. is, we'll be able to buy it, and then we can proceed with the combination.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Any other public comment? Moving to committee reports. I will begin with the zoning committee reports. Excuse me. The zoning hearing board will not meet during the month of October. The application for Windmore Court LLC at seventy-six oh-two Pine Road, Windmore, has been continued until the next meeting of the zoning hearing board, excuse me. The next regularly scheduled zoning hearing board will be Monday, November twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, at seven PM here in the township building. I have an announcement. James Curtis, the alternate member of the zoning hearing board, alerted the Board of Commissioners that of his need to resign his position on the zoning board as he will be relocating out of Springfield Township. As a result, the Board of Commissioners will be preparing to fill the vacancy on the zoning hearing board. Any resident interested in serving as an alternate member of the zoning hearing board should send a letter of interest or resume to the Board of Commissioners at the township website, W W dot Springfield Monaco dot org, or to the attention of the Board of Commissioners at the Springfield Township Building here at fifteen-Ton Paper Mill Road, Windmore, PA. That would be the zoning report. I will now turn to the chairman of the Public Works and Safety Committee, the vice president of the board, Commissioner Glenn Scham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few items this evening. The first item pertains to the sale of used vehicles. The Pennsylvania First Class Township Code requires that the Board of Commissioners sell individual pieces of personal property valued in excess of a thousand dollars or an entire lot of personal property valued together at a thousand dollars or greater by way of sealed bids or public auction. With that being said, I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the township to participate in a public auction sponsored by the Montgomery County Consortium of Communities to be held on November ninth, two thousand and fifteen. The auction will be managed by the professional auctioneer, J.J. Kane, Absolute Auction, fourteen oh-two Concha Hocken Road, Plymouth Meeting. Equipment to be sold at auction includes, one, nineteen ninety-nine International forty-nine-hundred dump truck is my favorite, two, two thousand and five Chevrolet K twenty-five-hundred Silverado pickup truck, a Graco line, laser line painter, a Simplicity thirty-eight-inch snow blower, a two thousand and four Chevrolet K thirty-five-hundred dump truck, and two two thousand and four Chevrolet Tahos. That's my motion.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Gecko or Graco?
Graco.
Graco.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please record a unanimous vote.
Thanks. I'd like to announce the Springfield Township will be a drop-off site for unused or expired prescription drugs on Saturday, October seventeenth, between the hours of ten and two. This program is being jointly sponsored by the Montgomery County District Attorney's Office and the Montgomery County Chiefs of Police Association. The township police officer will be on-site to accept the prescription drugs. And lastly, I'd like to discuss a program called Coffee with a Cop. The community members are invited to visit Starbucks Coffee Shop, fourteen fifty-nine Bethlehem Pike Flower Town on Saturday, October twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen, beginning at nine AM, for a program named Coffee with a Cop. The morning will provide, in a casual setting, for residents to ask questions and learn more about the Police Department of Springfield Township. And that's my last announcement. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Scham.
Thank you.
I will now call upon the chairman of the Internal Affairs Committee, Commissioner Robert Gillies.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have four items tonight. First, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve a September check-line conciliation in the amount of nine hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-six cents, and the October bill listing in the amount of one man, seven hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-six cents. That is my motion.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please record a unanimous vote.
Related to the two thousand and sixteen budget schedule, the following is the tentative meeting schedule through the adoption of the budget. The budget workshop meeting will be on ten twenty-one at seven PM. The budget presentation will be on eleven eleven at eight PM. The budget hearing will be on twelve nine at eight PM, and the budget adoption will be twelve sixteen at eight PM, all in this room. Next item, related to Resolution one three six zero, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution one three six zero, a resolution authorizing the distribution of state and township pension funds in a manner as set forth in the resolution. The state allocation for two thousand and fifteen was three hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-seven cents. That is my motion.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions on the motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please record a unanimous vote.
Next, related to pension plans, I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize township staff and the township pension fund consultant to create a draft contribution plan ordinance for new salaried employees. That is my motion.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please record a unanimous vote.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Gillies. I will now call upon the chairman of the Community Development Committee, Commissioner Baird Standish.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two motions tonight. First, concerning subdivision of the Conley Ray Hill tract, I move the Board of Commissioners approve the preliminary final subdivision plan known as the Conley Ray Hill Subdivision, forty-one and forty-three West Wisahicken Avenue, dated July sixth, two thousand and fifteen, last revised August twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen. The subject of the subdivision is a lotline change between the two neighboring properties. The plan provides for an annexation of a five-thousand square foot parcel from the Ray Hill property, forty-three West Wisahicken Avenue, to be joined in common deed with the Conley property, forty-one West Wisahicken Avenue. In conjunction with the subdivision plan approval, the board will waive the requirement to widen West Wisahicken Avenue from twenty-six feet to thirty feet along the frontage of the two properties, and also waive the requirement to plant forestry trees as required by the subdivision of land ordinance. That is my motion.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please record a unanimous vote.
Okay. My next motion is concerning the atria Nolan Builders, and I'm going to make this a motion, but this isn't to say that I'm going to vote for it. In fact, I'm going to vote against it, but we can talk about the reasons why I think that. But I will make the motion in any event, and it goes like this. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the advertisement of a public hearing and possible enactment of an ordinance associated with the amending, with amending of the zoning code map by the rezoning a portion of the TC tract, nine three oh-three Ridge Pike, Philadelphia, from triple, I'm sorry, from double A residential and single A residential to both a triple A and triple A AQ one overlay districts to the institutional zoning district to consider zoning code text amendments to the dimensional requirements of the institutional zoning district, and also to consider amendments to the zoning code text dimensional requirements to the triple A H-qualified one overlay zoning district. And that is my motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Standish. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions on the motion?
So my comments, this is where I sort of come out on this, and I have to say I've been fairly barraged by emails and, you know, telephone calls over the last day. I have to admit that I didn't have a lot of time to think about this on Monday night, and I've given it some more thought. And I guess where I come down is that I pretty much feel that I've heard all the arguments before, so if I'm going to go hear another public hearing, I don't think I'm going to hear anything new. And that's sort of combined with the fact that, you know, to me, the difference in the two plans is negligible, although I will say that it's not, I don't believe that means negligible to the developer. I think it's maybe significant to the developer, particularly as he's looking at building fifty-two units and weighing the differences. But I guess, you know, I'm following the lead of the way I thought when we looked at the Lloyd tract, which was that I spent a lot of time thinking about that plan and what the Hanson Development Group was going to do, and for a long time I felt, you know, this is maybe not a bad thing in light of the fact that somebody might come along and build two hundred units in front of Willow Grove Avenue. But I think we sat and listened to all sorts of testimony from neighbors, and not one person spoke out in favor of that project, and even in the face of, you know, a potential two hundred unit development. And so I voted against it, because I feel like, you know, we're representing the interests of our neighbors, you know. In this case, I guess I sort of feel the same way, although I will admit that when I compare this new plan to a fifty-two unit plan, if it were me, I would rather see the atria plan than a fifty-two unit plan, because I think the fifty-two unit plan is, to my mind, is more intense. But on the other hand, it's a, I understand these things are subjective, and I'm not, I don't live over there, so, you know, I don't, you know, look out onto my front lawn every day and imagine what it's going to look like. So that's where I come down on this. And, you know, I guess, you know, looking at the new plan, I do see that there are some units taken away, but I still see masses of buildings, you know, in the same places that they were before, just maybe not as intense. I like to see a little more open space in some of those areas. It's too bad that the atria couldn't perhaps have taken on a little bit more land so that some of the, some of the units could have been taken away. But anyway, I could go on with some of my thoughts right now.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Real quick. I just, I was the one who, you know, voted for it the first time, because I thought we were at the end of the road with the developer, and I would have to say I was wrong. Two people, you know, people worked with the developer, and he dropped two more units, which is eight percent or so, which isn't insignificant. And then we also learned that they are going to go ahead with the widening of Ridge Pike, which is going to make it a commercial highway, and asking ten people to put their homes right against the commercial highway, you know, I don't think is really the way to go with the development. And of course, the additional revenue, you already have institutional on both sides, so it's really just filling in what is already institutional. And in the back, you're one acre per home, which is what people live in over there, or less, depending on where you live. And I think for the balance of the township, the other seven thousand two hundred and ninety-six people who aren't here, the seven thousand dollars, the seven hundred thousand dollars in additional revenue, predominantly going to the school, which would be at least a half a million, if not more, is very important, and it is a better, environmentally sensitive to the area, too. But that's where I stand. So I'll leave it at that.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'll just make a quick comment. My view hasn't changed. I, we all are entitled to change our views. I think it's good. When we do, it means we're listening. But in this case, mine hasn't. Mine's been very clear for the two and a half years since atria came up, that I would support it if the overlay on the back, which is what the dean was talking about when we rezoned it ten years ago, if that were renounced, we went back to the underlying zoning. And I know that actually, may actually be a little worse for the neighbors, but on the other hand, it's what the neighbors bought into, so it seems fairer. And Mr. TC actually did agree to that for quite a while, and then that changed. So this doesn't have anything to do with that, so it doesn't really change my thinking. That's why I'm voting against it.
Thank you. There's no other comments. My only comments, well, I do appreciate Commissioner Scham and Standish taking their time out. We were approached by atria, and Mr. Alexander's not here. He's actually very good to work with. I think they really want to be in this community. It became to our attention that they may be looking elsewhere, perhaps in the next township. I don't really think at this point it's a game of chicken. I think it's a game that they just can't wait any longer. I think we've worked together. I appreciate everybody's comments. There's a lot to balance here with respect to quality of life, revenues, and whatnot, and I think where I'm coming out is I think this is overall benefit for the community, and I'll be voting to advertise. So that would be my comments. There's no other comments. There's been a motion, there's been a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please record a four to three vote. The motion passes. Thank you, everybody, for your time and effort. Baird, do you have any more?
Uh, no, that concludes my report.
Thank you. I will now call upon the, I'm sorry, chairman of the Cultural Resource Committee, Commissioner Jeffrey Harbison.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one agenda item and then one rogue remark. The agenda item is the recycling report during the month of September two thousand and fifteen, Springfield Township residents recycled two hundred and thirty-eight point nine tons of materials with a household participation rate of eighty point seven percent, and that cost for the month was six thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents. And my rogue remark is, we had Community Day the other day, which was a huge success, even down to the perfect weather. We had a wonderful committee that did a ton of work, spearheaded by Kerry Pacella. We had township workers working hard, and we had, the whole community came forward, and somebody, I guess we give the Pope credit for the good weather that we got, it just couldn't have been a nicer day. And it's nice to see that tradition so strong.
Jeff, if you wouldn't mind, could you give us, everybody, a little primer on the new recycling issues that are coming up?
Yeah, I'll give you.
I think it's important that people know that, why we may end the recycle bank and what the differences between recycling before we get into budget.
The beginning of this story, which is a little scary, is, and Don can tell, I'll say the numbers, and then Don will tell me the true numbers. We currently, Don, what are we currently, what are our trash numbers in recycling costs and?
Well, right now, in recycling, we're getting paid twelve dollars and twenty-three cents per ton. And under the new proposal, because the markets are horrible, we'd actually have to pay thirty dollars and change.
That's a forty-two dollar a ton shift. And what are we, what are we paying for our regular trash?
Uh, we're paying fifty-four dollars a ton.
Fifty-four. So that, that will have a big impact. That is something that we pass through. Part of what we've done over the last, I don't know how long the contract was, five years or so, was we had the recycle bank to encourage recycling, and that adds a cost, too, and that has been a debatable value, but it also an undebatable cost. And we're going to probably, we're going to terminate that, and that will save us some money and buffer some of that forty-dollar a ton, fifty-dollar a ton switch in the cost of our recycling.
Yeah, some of the, some of the discussion you had on Monday night is, the income in two thousand and fifteen from the sale of recyclables is about thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars, and the new cost is going to be seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty, or a swing of over one hundred and eleven thousand dollars. So.
I just think it's important to know those costs are coming, and a lot of decisions should be made.
And that's, at seven thousand households, you know, you're talking sixteen, seventeen bucks a house for the exact same stuff. Thanks for letting me tell everybody the date.
Well, it's important.
And the way that our budget works is that actually is a separate line. We all pay.
Now we got to come up with an extra hundred thousand dollars.
It's going to be advertised anyway.
Okay, that concludes my report.
I'm going to announce it.
That concludes my.
Thank you. Just coming back to the community development, Commissioner Standish, as part of your motion, I believe there was in there to read that the announcement of the public hearing date would be for the atria property.
I'm sorry, yeah, it'd be scheduled for November thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, at seven PM in the Springfield Township Building.
Okay, and clarify where it solicited, it doesn't affect our vote.
It's not a required part of the advertisement.
Okay. Well, as far as for our motion tonight.
No, you just said advertise it, and you just let the people know in advance when it would be.
So it will be on November thirtieth here in the township building. Time to be determined?
We have it seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. Okay. I will now move to the chairman of the library committee, Commissioner Peter Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no formal report, but I also want to second Jeff's assessment of Community Day as a raving success.
Thank you.
That's the end of my non-report.
I will now call upon the chairwoman of the Human Resource Committee, Commissioner Amy Sandman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. The board is now open for the second public comment period. If anybody has any public comment, that will be the appropriate time. Once, twice. Is there a motion to adjourn? Any second? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Please record a unanimous vote.